One minute, one minute.
Okay.
What turns this on? That?
Testing.
Counsel, check your microphones, please. Counsel, check your microphones, please.
Testing.
Madam, call the meeting order. Madam, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
We're gonna have our invocation by Lee Vogler. Also, following that, I'm happy tonight that two of our mayors are here, John Hamlin and Sam Kushner are here, and I'm sure if Councilman Saunders was here, he's finishing up a project, he sends greetings, but we're gonna have our invocation by Lee Vogler, followed by our pledge of allegiance by mayors John Hamlin and Sam Kushner. If everyone could stand, please.
Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight in this time of joy and togetherness of the Christmas season, and that we will discuss issues of importance to our city and our region and our commonwealth, and allow us to come together and work together for the betterment of all of our citizens, so that we may have a better year in the coming year than we even had this year. Amen.
I ask my friends, Mayor John Hamlin and Sam Kushner, to please come forward and lead us into the pledge of allegiance, please. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening to those of you who are here in chambers, and those who are viewing us by Facebook or River City TV. Counsel, we've been praying for Reverend Cecil Bridgeforth, and he's coming into the door. Let's give him a big hand, please. Reverend Bridgeforth has been sick, and he's here with us tonight. Reverend Bridgeforth, it's good to see you. Announcements and special recognition presented by Dr. Martha Walker from the Riverview Rotary. Please come forward, and anyone else who would like to join you, please bring them forward. Good evening to you all.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. I'm looking for our city manager, Ken Larkin. It is so good to be here tonight. I am here representing Riverview Rotary. I am Martha Walker. I am the current president of Riverview Rotary, and I am surrounded by Rotarians who are sitting in the back and also...
Yeah.
Yes.
I ask them to stand up, please.
And are also here, so we will... We are here together to celebrate a very special presentation this evening. First of all, let me thank all of you as members of city council for participating in this past weekend's Christmas parade. I hope you had a great time. You looked mighty sharp then coming down the main street. But I want to tell you a quick story. In 2018, Bill Skrenya, you're a Rotarian and director of Parks and Rec Department, stepped up to Riverview Rotary and asked us if we would support and financially contribute toward the waterfront park in downtown Danville. Riverview Rotary immediately said yes. We were happy to do that, and we have spent the last three years working to meet our financial commitment for this park. Now, you know, all of you who are members, know that Riverview Rotary began its service in the Danville community in 1988, when Rotarians from the Danville Club decided that we needed another organization, a little bit different. This service organization is united with Rotarians throughout the world to exchange ideas, build relationships, and take action. For 33 years, Riverview Rotary has aggressively carried out its mission. None of the service projects would have been possible without Riverview Rotary's intense efforts to raise money. Over the years, there have been community-wide spaghetti dinners sponsored in collaboration with our local industry, golf balls have been dropped from a helicopter, and rubber ducks have raced down the Dan River. Amazingly, all of these fundraisers have generated over $900,000, enabling Riverview Rotary Club to deliver on its take-action mission. Past president Glenn McClanahan chairs our annual Ducks on the Dan fundraiser effort and coordinates a huge team of Rotarians and community organizations that create a safe and fun event.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening.
Good evening.
We understand that these funds that we've committed and are presenting are just a small portion of the millions that the city has secured for this park. However, the gift comes to you because of the last three years, thousands of individuals have bought a $5 ticket, representing a duck with a number on it, to support the cause. We've also had businesses to invest in the initiative as well, in a large part. Some of those businesses are URW Community Federal Credit Union, Rippeys, Commonwealth Home Healthcare, Robert Woodall Automotive, Davis Automotive Restoration, Network Innovations, BB&amp;T, Scott &amp; Stringfellow, Piedmont Printing and Graphics, Events, Dominion Pool and Spa, Lawrence Distributing, Wilkins &amp; Company Realtors, DocuSystems, Simpson Realty, Quality Construction, 11th Hour Design, Demont Design, Danville Paint and Supply, Harris Harvey Neal &amp; Company, American National Bank &amp; Trust, The Lavender Group &amp; Associates, Aflac, Lewis Giles, Advanced Building Technologies Incorporated, and Two Witches. Each year, Interact students from Tunstall and Dan River High School join us on the Martin Luther King Bridge to help us dump the ducks into the water, and then they race down the Riverwalk Trail to help us get them out of the water when we come back out of the water with them. The Danville Life Saving Crew with Chief Robbie Woodall work directly with us in the water every year to keep us safe with their swift water response team, and we have kayakers that get in the water and paddle up and down the river, guiding the ducks, wrangling them, and when they get past us at the finish line, they chase them down the river as far as they can to catch them and bring them back. So, this year, and every year, we've had Sheriff Mondule. This year, we were honored to have Chief Booth and Chief Coffey join us in the water as officials to pick the winning ducks up. And lastly, the tickets are sold by our members. They're sold to families and friends across the country. Whoever they can email, they get them out, people buy the tickets, and we go to the community market, and our community steps up and supports by buying those tickets. So, they do all that to watch the explosion of yalla as it falls off Martin Luther King Bridge, it hits the water, and then they track it down to the crossing, and we catch them, try to catch them there. So, that's what generated the funds for this. Doctor Walker?
We tell you all of that to help you understand that this is just not a small event. This is a community-wide event. People invest. Businesses invest. The downtown region becomes a hub, a destination for tourism and communities and families to come together and celebrate, and they do that on that bridge that day, as they cheer for those ducks that they have no idea which one is coming down. But there's $50,000 over three years that we are presenting to you tonight on behalf of Riverview Rotary. And Mayor, I have the actual check that we will give to you, but we also have a large check that we would like to take a photo of, if you are willing to do that.
First of all, let me say to you all, thank you so much for being here tonight. Martha, when I saw you and Ms. Bolton at Link's on Saturday night, I was very excited when you said you were coming, but as you stated before, city council will tell you, we have three strategic goals, and I ask council to add one more in as partnerships. And my heart is just so happy tonight. I'm very emotional because to listen to all the partners that are helping us to move Danville forward, and I just can't thank you all enough. So, council, will you all join me? We're gonna take a picture, and if you want the Rotarians to join us, we can come up front, please. And Sue, if you take the picture, please come forward. Rotarians and council, join us, please. Let's give the Rotarians a big hand, please. Again, let's give them a big hand, please. So, council, I'm gonna go around. If you want to say something about the Rotary and the partners, Councilman Buckner?
Yeah. Mayor, you said it absolutely right. Partnerships, 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 the things that get achieved here in Danville, and the good work that the Rotarians do for our city, most folks don't even have a clue who you're sitting beside. It's probably a Rotarian, you know? They're everywhere, and they do a lot of great work for our city, and we couldn't do anything without the partnerships that you guys provide to us here in the city, and we thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell? Yes, I'm proud to be a Rotarian, and one of the reasons why I joined many years ago, because of community service and the people who are very serious and dedicated for Danville moving forward. So, I'm just elated, happy, and let's do it again. Councilman Mayo?
Thank you, thank you all for what you do for our city, and that parade, I was just overwhelmed, and you all did a great job, and I know so many of you keep doing the good work. We're so proud of you.
Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, thank you all. I mean, all the wonderful events that Rotary does throughout the year, and a lot of fun events that people go to, and things that Rotary does that probably most folks don't even realize, all the work that's being done, but certainly the parade this past weekend, and all the volunteers and the time and effort that went into putting that together was just incredible, and we all had a great time. But tonight, I mean, that park is going to be a game changer for our city and our region, and folks are incredibly excited about it, and so for you all to step up and to take ownership and to contribute in this way is, just goes beyond words. So, we're incredibly grateful, and I know the citizens across this region will enjoy it for many years to come and know that Rotary had a hand in making that happen is something special, so thank you.
Councilman Hood?
Yes, a special thanks to the Rotary, again, for all the events that you put together, for everything you do as far as collaborations go, and partnerships again throughout the city of Danville. And being at the parade as a young child, and watching, and watching the banners come down and see a Rotary, and now to be it as an adult, to see that, to enjoy the movement, and just to see so many people coming together, and just putting great things together, it just shows this city's resilience and collaboration and partnerships is something special to me, so I'm thankful. Thank you all.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm proud to be a Riverview Rotarian. We meet every Thursday morning, if you want to join. And we're also gonna be there on the 16th for the light show. We'll be the club that night.
I think the Rotarians are trying to help you. They're saying the 15th.
15th, on Wednesday the 15th? Okay, that's when we'll be there, come that night. But it's just inspiring. Martha, and Glenn, and Mayor Hamlin, and Barry, they've all been presidents, and they always are thinking up, with our help, things for us to do, and they inspire us to do it. They get us out there, inspire the club to want to get out and try to raise money for these worthy events, so we appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Councilman Whittle?
For Rotarians to work with so many different groups, and that, we went with the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to absolutely eradicate polio, so these are big, big steps that a lot of groups get together with Rotary and do, and I'm proud to be one. Thank you.
Again, thank you all so much, the partnerships. It's just a great meeting to start off the month of December, and with being, we just came out a month of thankfulness, but to all of the number of partners, and to everyone that you named, all the businesses that you name is huge, and I'm just so glad River City has this, so persons can see all of the people involved in continuing to move Danville forward. Thank you all so much. And updates on Caesar's? Robert Livingston, please come forward, and good evening to you, sir. We're gonna have an update on Caesar's, Virginia.
Evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mayor Jones, counsel. It is just amazing to be back in Danville, Virginia. Had a chance last night to drive around, when we got in late, just to see the Christmas lights, and looks like everybody's in the holiday spirit, so it's good to be here. The last time I was here was about the middle of September, and we gave an update on the design. It was at the institute, and that was a very formal presentation, and we were, it was a mark, you know, a place that we had to mark in history of where we were with the project at that time, so it was a big celebration. And, you know, hard to believe it was September. That's just been a few months ago, so I want to update you guys tonight on the work that's been done since then, and then talk about what's gonna come in the days to come, next few months. So, we've been hard at work since September, abating and demolition. That's pretty much what we've been doing at site, trying to get the site ready for the new construction, and as you guys know, the Dan River Mill's been around for a long time. There's been a lot of buildings that have been taken down over the years, but there's a lot of infrastructure that's still there, so the team is hard at work, just trying to take down what's remaining, and making sure that the site is ready for the general contractor when we get to that point. All of you may have seen the video with the big water tower coming down. That was a lot of excitement by everybody. That was probably the first big thing, the first big sign of activity on that site, and we were happy to see that happen, and so we've been getting a lot of questions about the finishing plan. You know, just when is that building gonna come down, how it's gonna come down? Our team is still assessing the safest and most economical method for removing that structure. Whichever path we take, we expect the process to begin somewhere in the March-April timeframe. It will be a lengthy process, as you can imagine. Even after that building comes down, it takes time to clear or repurpose all of the debris. As a result, the process is likely to stretch into the summer, and it's a great topic of interest for the community, so we will be keeping city manager updated on our plans about how that building's gonna come down, and if that thing comes down in some dramatic fashion, we're gonna make sure everybody knows about it. But we don't know exactly how it's gonna come down. So, the time needed to remove the finishing plant in a responsible way is not gonna slow down the project. So, the construction will begin in other areas of the site, even though we'll still be doing demolition and remediation of the other, the opposite area of the site. So, it's gonna take several months, and the work will be, with the debris removal and material crushing, will happen simultaneously with the new construction. So, we've also been participating in the master planning process for the West Main Street Corridor, being led by the team of WRT. This is a terrific opportunity for the city to be creative about the spaces around the Caesar's, Virginia project, and those areas that are beyond that. We are very committed to being engaged partner in that process. We've also been involved in submitting permits. In November, we submitted documentation to the city for the initial round of construction permits. We will continue to work closely with the city and state agencies during that process. One thing of note, if you've driven by the site, you may have noticed along the northeast corner of the site, we are creating a sediment pond that's needed for erosion control. So, if anyone asks, that's what we're up to. And just last week, we issued an RFP to potential general contractors. Bids are due in early January, and our goal is to select a general contractor by the end of January. We will be looking for a contractor with the capacity to mobilize quickly, to get this project underway in the spring. So, representatives from a number of national and regional contractors were in town last week to meet with our design and construction team and to walk the site. So, very exciting to be at that step of the game. So, what's next? I want to talk a little bit about the construction, and then we'll talk about opportunities for contractors and suppliers. I know that's near and dear to some of your hearts. In the upcoming months, you will continue to see on the site that we'll be preparing for the GC to get its work done. This includes taking down the finishing plant, as we've talked about, and coming down, and, you know, continuing to do the abatement and demolition. Once the GC has been identified and can mobilize, we will begin to start the new construction, and we expect that to be the hotel tower. That's gonna take a while to get that thing up to however many floors, 18 floors, 20 floors, what was it, Councilman Vogler? A bunch, as tall as the, as tall as the Three Sisters.
Twenty.
So, the hotel tower's on the firmest ground. There's not a lot of work that has to be done at that location, so you'll see the crane arrive, and the hotel tower will be the first thing that you'll see constructed. We do anticipate having a groundbreaking event, but the timing of that event's gonna depend on several factors. Some of that has to do with the general contractor mobilization, some of it has to do with weather. We really don't want to do that when it's bitter cold outside, but we'll communicate with city manager, our progress on that front. So, contractors and vendors. We have made important commitments to the community when it comes to offering opportunities to local and minority-owned businesses and contractors to be involved in this project, and we intend to keep those commitments. We are asking each general contractor who is bidding on this work to explain to us their track records in working with minority contractors, plus how in particular they will reach out to a diverse array of businesses on this project. The general contractor we select will be expected to hold outreach and informational sessions with interested suppliers and contractors, and those will be well-advertised. We don't want anyone to not know how they can get involved in this work. In the meantime, we continue to build our list of individuals and companies that have reached out to receive more information about the project. Many of you have gotten folks to, connected with Stephen Gold, our local representative, and I hope that will continue. As you hear about individuals that are interested in the project, please pass that along. We have quite the list that we're putting together. So, one item to keep in mind, you know, while we will engage as many local contractors and suppliers as possible, we will need to go outside of the area for parts of the work, including some of the more specialized aspects that are typically, that you find in higher markets, or bigger markets. The Danville construction market just isn't quite big enough on its own to cover everything that's needed in this project. So, if you see trucks or workers from Greensboro, or Charlotte, or Roanoke, or Richmond, or some other location, that's the reason. We just couldn't find that work, that expertise here in town. With that said, we're super excited about putting as many local folks to work on this project as humanly possible, and for many years to come, as we open this project, and it'll be here for a long time, we hope. So, at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that Mayor, council, that you might have about the project.
First of all, thank you for the report. Stephen, while the council was asking some questions, just wanted you to think about coming up, possibly giving some information of how those who are here and those who are viewing can possibly get in touch with you, just in case they don't know how. I think I saw a hand over here. Councilman Campbell? Yes, Mr. Livingston, you really, I want to thank you for the words that you spoke tonight about community relationship, especially with the contracts and jobs that develop for the people in the community. It's very important to me, being on council, that minorities have an opportunity to participate and be part of Caesar. I just want to say, thank you, sir, for what you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen?
Good evening to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Anyone who has, who would like to be included on the list to receive information about opportunities, please feel free to email our office. The email address is info, I-N-F-O, at sova, S-O-V-A, dot legal, L-E-G-A-L, and the phone number also for the office is 792-2424, and happy to talk with anybody about the opportunities that are, that might be available.
Can you do that one more time? Because one of the things that we've heard, as Councilman Campbell stated, persons in the community wanted to make sure that they were, and I thank you for engaging everyone, but if you can give that information one more time, and for those who are interested in contracts, vendors, correct? Stephen, if you could give that one more time.
Absolutely. Email address is info, I-N-F-O, at sova, S-O-V-A, dot legal, and phone number for the office is 792-2424.
Anyone else? Again, thank you all so much, and thank you for the update. Thank you so much. Thank you. Councilman Whittle?
When you're reprocessing the concrete processor for the site, Dan?
That's a good question, Councilman. I have no idea what they're gonna do with all that material, but I know they're gonna have to get rid of it.
Local contractors out of five out there that are working now, and that's good to see. Thank you.
Awesome.
Again, thank you so much. We're now in the communications from visitors. Any citizens who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Anyone who desires to speak on any item not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Sam Kushner. I'm a resident of Danville, Virginia. Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, I'm grateful for the opportunity to appear for you, before you this evening. I'm here to request that the council consider a revision of the city seal. We don't see the seal often. Mr. Larkin is trying to bring up a visual.
I'm sorry.
Technology. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, but I've...
Want me to pull it up?
Took the time to actually put it on here, but it's... Work unless...
If you want to continue to talk about it while he's pulling it up, you can. Oh, I think it's, you want to show the seal?
Yes.
Okay, I see it.
I'd certainly like council to be able to...
I think we might get, we might get Councilman Vogler to get this flag and put this flag in the middle of, out here.
Just carry it out there for you?
I don't want to prolong that. Run it through the room like Braveheart.
Again, those of you who are watching from the last presentation, if you need that information to contact Stephen Gould, it's I-N-F-O, at sova, S-O-V-A, dot legal. The telephone number is 434-792-2424. There we go.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the great seal of the city of Danville, Virginia. At the top, of course, we see Danville Mills in the time of its glory. We see also a representative ball of cotton to the right in the second quadrant, the book of knowledge and the lamp of knowledge.
Can you come forward to, can you come closer to the mic? I think they want to hear you and I don't think that everyone can hear you.
At the bottom of the seal, a visual of a tobacco barn, fields of cotton, I'm sorry, fields of tobacco growing and two tobacco leaves. Going up toward 3:00, we see a double decker city bus. And then moving on, a locomotive and above that, a prop airplane. And there you are. That's, they're all the things that someone wanted to know about the city of Danville, probably in late 50s or early 60s when the seal was put together. There are a lot of different stories about how it came to be. I heard on one or more occasions that there was a contest and a little girl submitted the winning design. My friend, John Hamlin, who was kind enough to be with me tonight to support me, tells me that the seal was designed by the sister of former member Bob Clark, who I had the pleasure of serving with. In any case, what may have been appropriate to represent the city in 1960, I suggest to you is inappropriate for what we want to say about the city today and tomorrow and in years to come. The city, the seal says nothing about Danville today, about the Danville that you gentlemen have helped to create. It does not say that we are an energetic, dynamic, forward-looking, welcoming, welcoming community. And I suggest to you, that's the message that we want to present to the public. We want every prospect, whether it be a corporation or a new business or an individual who's considering a move to Danville, to know that we are the kind of community that I've just suggested. Something that suggests that we are looking forward rather than back to the past. So, I ask you gentlemen to consider revision of the seal. We, the seal appears in public buildings. My recollection is that the seal appeared on your stationary and I think the stationary the city manager uses. So, every time you send out a communication, every time we correspond with someone who may bring with it or him great improvements to our city, needs to see who we are. We need to put our best foot forward. And so, I ask that in the near term, you consider a design contest, not contest, but a project. I understand the city is engaged in a marketing initiative. I suggest that revision of the seal might be an appropriate thing for you to consider, not at the top of your agenda next month, but not so far down on your agenda in the weeks ahead. I thank you very much for your attention. I also bring you greetings from former Mayor Seaward Anderson, who supports this undertaking. I feel confident that our friend Linwood Wright, were he here today, would say, "Right on. Let's do it." If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to respond to them.
Any questions, council?
Say something that I don't...
Can you get closer to your microphone, please, so they can hear you?
Kushner doesn't, doesn't stop. I remember when I first got on council, he said, "You know, what about those trees down on Memorial Drive?" And I said, "What about them?" He said, "Well, you know how bad they look up against the river?" And I was like, "Okay." And, you know, we'd say something about it and say something about it and Sam would keep pushing and pushing. And all that clutter got taken out on Memorial Drive as far as I can see. And it just comes from you sticking with what you're, you know, what you see and what your vision is and we appreciate it.
Councilman Vogler?
Sam and former mayor and former councilman recently with us, thank you for coming down and bringing this forward and I think I remember you bringing this up when, when you were serving with us not long ago. And I think, you know, looking at it in front of us, it is, that's Danville of the past and certainly Danville of today and moving forward is much different than, than what that seal shows. And I think it's an opportunity to, to engage our citizens and the public about, you know, what, what do they think Danville is today? How do we best represent who we are today and moving forward? And so, anytime we have an opportunity to hear from our citizens and engage the public in a way, I think is an exciting opportunity and I think that this could certainly fall in line with that. So, I'm excited to see where this, this may lead in the future and, you know, see, see what our citizens think. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, I want to say thank you also for your leadership and wisdom, still appoint you about the city moving forward. I think it's most appropriate. For me, it's 100% you've got my approval and whatever I can do, no problem.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, this is one of these ideas, I'd say, "Why didn't I think of this?" You know, and I'm sure the other council members are saying the same thing. I don't think it's inappropriate for the time, but it's outdated for our time. And at that time, it was appropriate, but not any longer. There's so many changes that's been made. You can hardly see the river there. We're trying to center on the river. And anytime you want to get tobacco out of it, I'll be glad to see that. But anyway, I think, I think an update is, is in order. So, thank you. Great idea.
Councilman Buckner?
Mayor Kushner and Mayor Hamlin, thank you guys so much for joining us tonight and sharing your knowledge and wisdom with us, any, any opportunity that you get. We really do appreciate it. Like everyone else has said, I think it's a, it's a great idea. Let's change it up. We are a new Danville. Let's show everyone we're a new Danville. Thank you guys so much.
Well, I, I thank you, Councilman Buckner. I'm glad that you were last because you said something that I stand by. You didn't call them former mayors. You said Mayor Kushner, Mayor Hamlin, Mayor Saunders, Mayor, and we have meetings often. So, on January, city manager is going to be sending out an invitation for us to come together again and hopefully we'll have an update on your request at our January meeting. But I want to thank you both and all of the former mayors. When I became mayor, you all sat around the table with your wisdom and your knowledge and you poured it into me and I'm looking forward to January because it's time to start off pouring back into me again. So, thank you all so much. In January, you'll be receiving a letter about our meeting and I look forward to giving you an update in regards to your request.
Thank you so much for your warm welcome and for your interest in this project.
Thank you.
And I wish you good health and all good things at Christmas.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward this time. Let's give this young man a big hand who's coming to the podium now, that's Reverend Cecil Bridgeforth.
Gentlemen, it's good to see each of you. I died twice, I fled line twice, but the good Lord brought me back. I believe there's still yet much for me to do. The last time I was with you, I was concerned about the homeless. After seeing the news last night, what's happening in Roanoke? I, I want to commend the Rotary and all of their participants who worked together to do what they've done. We're building, but what about the homeless? We cannot leave them behind. There has to be a place that they can go, not just for the night and then be put out in the streets during the day. It has to deal with mental health. We need a place where we can house our homeless and while there, we can contact Everett who have classes in sociology and psychology and that they can have these students to come and work with the homeless. There's a reason why they're homeless. I believe that there is a productive workforce out there, but we'll never know what they're capable of doing until we can bring them in and reason with them and find out just how they can contribute to our city. So, I, I'm concerned, as I was then, I'm more concerned now, that there are too many who feel that life is not worth living. But we need a place in this city. You're bringing in a casino, hallelujah, praise God, thank you, Jesus, for all the jobs and opportunities that are knocking, but what about the homeless? Can I tell you something? All of us are but one paycheck for being homeless. And we would want you to have somewhere to go and someone to care for you. So, in all of your millions, literally millions of dollars that are being poured into downtown, unfortunately, everybody don't live downtown. So, all of these millions that are coming in and grants, they're ought to be somewhere. All these vacant buildings that need renovating, they, one of them can be renovated, that our homeless can be cared for and that they can be dealt with mentally. It's a mental health issue. And I believe that once you do that, you'll find a powerful workforce that is sleeping on the streets, sleeping under the bridges and sleeping anywhere they can find to sleep. Housing them in the nighttime and then kicking them out in the day is doing them no good. We are better than that. Aren't we better than that? Aren't you glad you're living in Danville? Oh, my God. Nobody's glad to live in Danville, son of a...
Amen.
Amen, I am.
Amen.
But Danville is better than that and we ought to display it with the new seal that is soon to be displayed. It ought to display that we are concerned about our citizens. Number two, and I'm going to my seat. A lot of work being done, being done in Elm Grove, but the strange thing is, nobody have contacted the citizens of Elm Grove to let us know what's going on. We don't want to go to sleep one night and then wake up the next day and there is no Elm Grove because the city have come in and they have redesigned it and done many other things. We are still a community and we need to be kept abreast of what is happening to our community. And I pray in the future that when events or when changes about to be made, that the citizens of any community should be aware of it. I know, I know. Check the 20-year plan, but the 20-year plan changes every year. So, we need to know what is going on and it'd be kind, it'd be nice if someone would just let us know and we can have a meeting with the citizens of, that live in Elm Grove, that they may not be shocked with what's coming up. Dr. Miller, he's my cardiologist. He's been begging me to come down here, but here I am.
Thank you.
I saw him at work one day. I was in the hospital and I mean, phew, he was like an energized bunny. He was the man about to have, about to die, but he was whirling, I mean, he was calling out orders. He was calling OR or he was calling everybody to get that man down there. Hardworking councilman, cardiologist, number one. Thank you all and good to be back. Bless your hearts.
It's good to have you back. Reverend Bridgeforth's wife is here. Ma'am, if you would stand, we would like to just give you a welcome. She says that's his caregiver. Council, Councilman Campbell?
Mr. Mayor, so good to see my friend back on the wall, but he made one mistake. He didn't take his text.
I think he took his text. He, he went to the book of Dr. Miller, Councilman Vogler.
Reverend Bridgeforth, it's good to see you back. And Dr. Miller gets all that energy from all those turkey dogs that he eats and prepares for everybody. But I, thank you so much for, for coming down and especially, you know, bringing awareness and, and attention to the, the issue of homeless, homelessness in our community and in our region. And I know it's, it's a passionate issue of yours and I appreciate it. And, and I know that there are things, as you mentioned, there are a lot of opportunities and exciting things that are coming our way that, that I believe will lift up a number of people in our city, but we also need to make sure that we do all we can for those who, for one reason or another, have, have gotten behind or have been, you know, left out for one reason or another. And so, whether that's transitional housing or, or things of that nature, I hope that we will look into doing all that we can. I don't know if he wants to speak on it tonight, but I know Councilman Buckner is really passionate about it too and has been working on some things that, that maybe could help. But there, there are conversations that are going on, believe me. It's not something that has fallen on deaf ears by any means and so that we will do all we can and working, as the mayor likes to talk about partnerships and certainly there, there could be a number of partnerships with this regard as well. But we want to do everything we can to make sure that all of our citizens are thriving and succeeding in this city and, and to help those when they, when they have fallen on hard times. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm glad you're back. You know, we need you to prod us, to challenge us and we missed you. Remember a couple of meetings ago, I said, I'd seen you in the hospital and I said, "Well, I guess you won't be in tonight to the council meeting." He said, "Well, I just might get my friends to put me on my bed and carry me in here like it happened in the Bible." I said, "Yeah, you'd probably do that." And, but you came tonight on, under your own power and we're certainly glad to see you and the city hadn't forgotten you. And, you know, Elm Grove is, is dear to my heart and, you know, I've been pushing the city for some time to use some of our funds to help the roads and the streets and the sidewalks and update. I think it got forgotten somewhere along the way after annexation, that, that community as well as others in the town got forgotten. That community, as well as others in the town, got forgotten. And now's our chance to make it up, or try to make it up. So all the council members are certainly on your side for that. So thank you for coming down. I know it was a struggle, but thank you for coming. We missed you.
Reverend Bridgeforth, thank you again and your wife for being here tonight. As a matter of fact, city manager, deputy city manager, will tell you, there are two things that we are sincerely working on, and I'm sure they're going to reach out to you. And one of those is the Elm Grove Kemper Road area. There's a plan in place that they are sharing with you. Also, Norma Brower, who passed away, Norma is working on, was working on, well, is working on exactly what you were talking about in reference to homeless programs and housing. And you're absolutely correct. So we are now hiring someone, and we've hired one person, and I think that program is going to continue. So I think, to make a long story short, you're going to be hearing some good news coming from both reports that you've given us tonight. But again, thank you and your wife both for being here, and it's great to see you. And I thank you so much for introducing a 67th book of the Bible called Dr. Miller. We're still in communications. Anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you all tonight? As you all know, I'm Cory Bowe, the Director of Economic Development. I have the wonderful opportunity to introduce you all to two new members of our team. As you all know, 2021 was a wonderful and exciting year for the city of Danville. We announced over $480 million of new investment to the city-
Say that again, you went too fast.
Over $480 million of new investment to the city of Danville. And I will say, that momentum is going to continue to grow over the coming years. So it was very important that we add to our staff within the Danville Office of Economic Development and Tourism. So not only will we offer enhanced services to, of course, our new prospective industry coming in, through our new Assistant Director, we'll be enhancing services to our existing business community. And with the 2 million-plus visitors that we'll be seeing coming into the city of Danville, we have added tourism, a new tourism program, to our office with the new tourism manager. So at this time, I'd like to introduce you to our new Assistant Director, Barbara Fedor, who's joined us from the Georgia Economic Development Partnership, and Lisa Meriwether, who's our new tourism manager, who joined us from Lynchburg's Economic Development Office.
Come on up forward, so those who view and can see you, so they can put a face, a name to the face. So you're going to have to point out, Cory, which is which?
Barbara's first.
Hello, nice to meet everyone. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Welcome.
And Lisa Meriwether.
Thank you so much. We welcome you all here. Welcome to Danville. We're real excited about it, so thank you so much for being here. Any questions from council? Well, thank you so much. I'm sure they will. Take a good look, because they will be calling you.
Well, I was going to say, based on the presentation tonight, as I'm growing in my work family, it appears to me I need to reach out to the Rotarians and get involved in the community. So hit me up, guys, just saying. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
That's what I'm doing. Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the, thank you all so much, that's not on the agenda may come forward. Welcome back from Las Vegas.
Thank you. And that's what I'm here to talk about. Tommy Bennett, citizen of Danville. I would like to say, it was about 10 of us that went out to Las Vegas, and our very first stop was Caesar's. Danville, I'm excited about what's coming. Just to be there, just to see the activities and the way we were treated in Vegas at Caesar's, I am looking forward. While I was there, I took one second, and I text Steven Gould and said, "I'm looking forward to 2023." Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under meeting minutes, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
But it began with your willingness to approve both referenda placed on the ballot for the voters to decide. On behalf of the boys and girls in the district and those who enroll, who enrolled now and those who will enroll for years to come, I want to thank you. And I hope and pray that through this process of the sales tax, getting that out there and started and the bond referendum, that we continue to have that support for education. It means so much for our board members, our students, our educators, and our entire community. It is certainly changing, a transformational change, and will lead to transformational change in the school system. We thank you, and thank you, Mr. Lark and Mr. Reynolds, and to the legal staff for guiding us through this process.
Thank you, thank you. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else who desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time?
Question.
Let me put it on the floor first. Let me close the public hearing. Anyone else like to speak on this agenda item may come forward this time? I close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the, and re-derang, I'm sorry. Help me with that one.
Reordaining.
Thank you. Reordaining certain sections of Chapter 37 entitled Taxation of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia by creating a new Article 8 entitled Impulsion and Additional Sales and Local Use Tax, Use revenues for construction and renovation of schools, and adding a new section, 37-185, entitled Impulsion and Additional Sales Tax Used of revenues for construction and renovation of schools, first reading.
Second, by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion, Councilman Whittle.
Yes, sir. I read it says, consideration of an imposition and additional general local sales tax and local use tax. Is that two different items?
Sit, come to the microphone, or speaking to your microphone. Come to the microphone, either way you want to do.
My microphone is still on.
Great.
Yes, sir, it is. What the Virginia code says is that if the voters by referendum pass the sales tax, then you get to impose a general use tax. So if I were to rent a TV for the Super Bowl weekend that may be coming up, then that also would get that 1% tax. And so if you vote on the sales tax, you automatically get to do the use tax. So that way, you're picking up additional taxes for things that aren't purchased but are for use. So mainly things like renting equipment or renting appliances and things like that.
Yes, sir. And just in some reading, it came up that it was for leases?
Yes. And it's not talking about like lease of property, of real property. It's talking about lease of, like I said, if I have a toolkit, it's my property and I lease it, and I'm in the business of leasing tools, then it would be something that would be taxed on. Like I said, the perfect example that I think of is people who rent a big screen TV for the Super Bowl weekend. It'll pick those things up, too.
Thank you. That was first reading. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. First reading, number three, Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending and reordaining the certain sections of Chapter 37 entitled Taxation of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia by amending Article 8 entitled Imposition of Additional Sales Tax on Local Use Tax and revenues for construction and renovation of new schools by adding section, adding a new 37-186 entitled Imposition of Additional Local Use Tax, Use revenues for construction of renovations of schools.
Second, by Dr. Miller, first reading. Any discussion? Under this item C, consideration of the issuance, sale, and award by the City of General Obligation Bonds, Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and award by the City of Danville, Virginia of one or more series of general obligation public improvement and refunding bonds heretofore authorized, providing for the form, details, and payment of such bonds, and providing for the refunding of certain outstanding bonds of the city.
Second, by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Crick, if you would call the roll, please. Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Aye.
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 Consideration of approving the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution of the council of the City of Danville, Virginia approving of the city's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against McKesson, Cardinal Health, Amerisource, Burgen, Janssen, and their related corporate entities, and directing the city attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate city's participation in the settlements.
Second, by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion, Dr. Miller.
Yes, somewhat overshadowed by COVID the last year and a half is that last year 100,000 people died of opioid-related overdoses, 100,000 in this country, about 80,000 the year before. So the city entered into these agreements as a joint class-action suit against these companies who willingly knew what they were doing, willingly knew addictive drugs, but promoted them as non-addictive, short-acting opioids. And they were supported by, unfortunately, physicians, pharmacies, corporate entities, middlemen who made money if, you know, drug script companies who made money if the more prescriptions were written until it just got totally out of control. And 100,000 people died last year. So we entered into this to participate in the class-action suit because of the damages that were done to communities all over the country. It's costing millions for communities, you know, rescue squads, treatment of overdoses, hospitals, mental health, millions of dollars. But these companies made billions. Purdue Pharmaceutical, as of a couple of years ago, had profited $18.6 billion, billion dollars. So this is a settlement to try to make some recompense to the communities and the citizens who have suffered. Thank you.
Councilman Whittle.
We can speak about the specifics of it?
We're in discussion, sure. And if you have any questions, city attorney asks you to come to the microphone just in case she has any questions. Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so it's a, it's a $1 million settlement over 18 years.
Correct.
Look at it, and I think we should fight it. It's probably $10 for every dead person that we've got.
It may be.
I understand that everybody's worked hard on it, and I'm not pushing, I'm just pushing back on a million bucks for 18 years. Guess what it would take to go in and fight, and I still think we should fight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anyone else? Madam, call the roll, please.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 Aye. Consideration of amending Chapter 1.5 of Danville City Code to conform to Senate Bill 1157, Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending and reordaining the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended to add new Chapter 1.5 entitled City Council Elections and Organization Meeting, School Boards, Elections, et cetera.
Second, by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion, Councilman Whittle.
I just, I disagree with it for the simple reason is I feel that, that city council meetings get lost in national elections and...
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I, whether you think they should be in May or November, I believe it should be up to the locality. So I'm personally, I'm, I don't like Richmond telling localities when their election should be. I think that should be up to each locality. So just out of principle, I don't agree with the Senate bill. I understand we have to do it, we don't have a choice, but maybe that'll change as the General Assembly's changing. But again, I think that decision should have been left up to locality. So this Senate bill, I think, is a mistake in general. I just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Councilman Campbell.
Yes, I was wanting to piggyback off of Lee. Clark, if we vote this down, what's the purpose of doing it if we have no power?
Well, you need to approve it because otherwise what will happen is elections will continue in May, and then you will have a situation where the Attorney General will intervene. So we don't want to have that happen, I don't believe. This is a situation, you know, most of the jurisdictions that are doing what you all have done don't particularly care for it. But one of the things we have done, we have chosen to do is rather than have a charter change, which has the General, has to have the General Assembly's approval, we've done it with an ordinance. So should things change?
Somebody, what you said, Clark, it was a what?
Let me take that. I said, we've done, and rather than doing, changing the charter, we have done an ordinance. So should the General Assembly's opinion on this issue change, you can always go back and completely repeal the ordinance. So what we've done in this, like I said, what we've done in this ordinance is created a new city code section and chapter, and it sets up the election of the school board and the city council, and then sets you all's meeting as the first business day of January. Otherwise, you would have a situation where your first business day, or the day you elected a mayor, would be July 1st after having an election in December and taking office in January 1st. So we, again, we've specifically chosen an ordinance as opposed to a charter change.
So what's your base suit?
I think you have to pass it. I don't think you have any choice.
Councilman Vogler.
I would have agreed with you entirely a couple of months ago, but I just wonder, we've got a completely different governor, lieutenant governor, and attorney general coming in, and I know the attorney general that's coming in pretty well. And from conversations, he didn't agree with the bill that created all of this. And you just said a moment ago that if we don't pass this, the attorney general would become involved.
Could intervene.
Jason Mijares is going to be the attorney general next year, not the current one. So are you telling me that if we kept our elections where we are, that the attorney general would have to override us?
It could do that. The other thing is that citizens, if you were to keep the elections the way they are, citizens could actually sue the Board of Elections to overturn the elections as void, not voidable as void. Again, I emphasize, we've created a resolution or an ordinance as opposed to a charter change, which allows you all to change that should anything happen.
I just got one more question.
To change the mind of the General Assembly.
And I got you on that completely. I know where you're coming from on it. I just wonder, because we're in December, the new regime comes in in a month, is there a reason why we have to do this tonight versus?
Because people have already started asking for petitions for the May election, and the registrar has been very nervous about that and trying to hold people off. If we don't go ahead and pass it, then we will have people that will be filing for an election that will be occurring in May, and it just creates a real bad situation for the Electoral Board and for the rest, and quite frankly, for the city.
All right, I just, I, to, we're changing it, and it may change right back in a couple of months. Just seems odd to me when we could just hold off a few weeks and not maybe change it at all. That's all I'm saying.
I get you, and again, again, sound like a broken record. That's why we didn't ask the General Assembly to do a charter change, which would take a year to tell you this could be done in a matter of one night if we needed to, if we wanted to remove this from the code. And that's why we also set up a separate chapter so that it's very easy to find and get rid of.
Councilman Whittle, then Dr. Miller.
So if we, if we agree to go ahead and change it, then if we want it changed later, the attorney general could do that when they came in office.
The way I, the way it's set up is if, should the General Assembly allow localities to go back and choose their elections, and you all decide you want to go back to May? No, y'all would just say, put an ordinance on repealing Chapter 1.5 of the city code, and it would be that simple. So it would be up to you all. But again, the General Assembly's got to change their mind and change the law back to the way it used to be.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said before. I was opposed to this from the word get-go. You know, even the Virginia State Senator from Virginia Beach that introduced the bill, her city council was against it. And I got a feeling that many city councils and counties were against this. And I just, running through my mind, it would be good for us to stand up and say, hey, this is wrong, and rally the flag and see who else we get. I know that's probably futile, but I just don't like the, being imposed by the General Assembly, I think was totally wrong, and may be inevitable, but it's totally wrong.
I think, Clark, I think, I agree with everything that's been said, but I think you need to reiterate what's happening with the staff, with Peggy Patty and her group. I think that's where you need to put the emphasis on, on what they're dealing with.
Yeah, they're currently, like I said, she's held a few people off, and if we don't do this tonight, people are going to start filing for the general election in May. And that just creates a real bad situation for her. Plus, we need to get this to Richmond because it has to ultimately be approved by the Electoral Board of the state so that we can move the elections and do everything, because we want to do things lawfully. We don't want to, want to do things unlawfully.
So what you're, what you're basically saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, Peggy them are all, because this is something that none of us agree with, I think we sent a resolution.
That's correct.
But right now Peggy them are trying to figure out what they need to do.
Exactly.
If by chance, as Lee stated, the new regime says we want to repeal this, we can come back and just change it, but for right now Peggy them need some direction.
That's correct. That's exactly correct.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, though, because let's say we change it tonight, so then all of a sudden we're moving forward with a November election, we're telling people, don't file now, it's in November, and in a month from now, they say, well, guess what? You can hold it whenever you want. Are we going to come in here in February and say, guess what, there's an election in May? I don't think that's going to happen. I mean, we're not going to tell people there's an election in three months.
That'll be up to you all, but if they, if they do it the right way, then you might have a November election and then go right back to May elections, who knows?
So you guys will have to go in November, and then it'll come. I, Clark, I just don't, I, look, I love Peggy Patty, and I don't ever want to do anything to make life hard on her, but I just, I can't get behind this. I'm not voting for it.
The real, the real impact to you all is that those of you that are sitting around this council, dais, will all serve an extra six months, whether it's 22 or 24.
I think you're probably making it worse, Clark, because some of them may not be wanting to serve in addition to six months. I think you better stop while you're ahead, because some of us who are, Clark, stop while you're ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I understand the angst. Don't forget, the lieutenant governor was the one that broke the tie in the Senate.
Larry?
Yes, I want to get a clear, piggybacking off of Lee again. If we vote against it, that's, you're saying that is definitely the wrong direction?
That's correct. I would not be recommending this if I did not think this is what we needed to do to lawfully follow, to be, to be lawfully and follow the law. Whether we agree with the law or not, that really doesn't matter.
So if we vote no, then we actually freeze the registration office. No, you vote yes, you actually taking the load off of Peggy because right now this came down, and Peggy came, like it came down on us, it came down on Peggy them. If you vote no, Peggy's, don't know what to do right now. That's what I'm saying. Exactly. If you vote no, she don't know what to do. And then at the beginning of January, everything is just over. If you vote yes, Peggy, it gives Peggy, correct me if I'm wrong, Clark, it gets Peggy and her staff, because we oftentimes, remember, too, we oftentimes talk about our employees. Right now, Clark is telling us, we got employee, or staff members who elect, not our employees, but we got persons out there that don't know what to do because this was dropped on everybody. Even when we voted, we sent a resolution saying no. So I'll be voting yes because Peggy them need something clear. As a matter of fact, Madam, call the roll.
Mr. Vogler?
No.
Mr. Whittle?
No.
Mr. Buckner?
Yes.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Maya Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
What we got, Clark? What we got, too?
Motion fails.
So what do we do, Clark?
I'll have to find out, because I don't know. Right now, right, right, right now, it'll probably be brought back.
Can, can we, can you want to add something to this?
Thought, a question, just, and of course, the city attorney is more, have an expert on this subject, but when the General Assembly enacts a law, it seems to me that, what I've observed in my eight years here, it doesn't become effective until July of that year. So if they were to change something this year, that's my question to you, if they were to change something in the next General Assembly, how does that work with the timeline? If it doesn't become effective until July, how do they retroact, would it even work retroactively to May?
This, this law actually becomes effect, goes into effect January 1 of 2022, so it's just...
Clark, my suggestion is just, thank you, Ken, anything else, Ken? My suggestion, go ahead.
Considering that logistically, I mean, just the way time works, I'm not sure how that would, how we'd be able to get out of not having the election in November.
A good point. I was going to suggest tabling this, and I wish I would have made that suggestion because now, I don't know what's going to happen. Here is what I'm going to suggest, Clark, that you meet with Peggy Patty, meet with the generals, and meet with whomever, and I don't know if this can be brought back at our next meeting, I don't know.
It can. If somebody that was on the prevailing side, which voted no, were to make the motion, it could come back, and then we would have an odd number of people, and we would at least have a five-four one-way instead of a four-four.
What about Councilman Saunders, who was, who's finishing up a project? Could he, because he wasn't?
I'd have to look at that.
Okay, do that.
And we may, or we may be able to do just, just a plain motion to reconsider the action, so I'll have to...
Well, let's, let's do that.
It's the prevailing side, though, it's four to four.
Councilman Saunders, where it's not here?
Well, since the motion failed, the prevailing side is those who voted no, I think. I'll have to look, I mean, I'll literally have to look into that. We don't, we have never had a four to four vote.
Well, look into it and let us know. Just send us, let us know. Under item, because I know Peggy, thank you so much, Clark. Under item F, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation for capital and special projects. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Councilman Campbell.
I move for adopting an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance by anticipating the process for the issuing of bonds and appropriating the same for the anticipation for expenditures.
Second, by Councilman Buckner, first reading, communication, city manager. Thank you. Deputy city manager. Thank you. City attorney?
Yes, sir, if I can get my mic to work. Just wondering, like, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there was some publication, there was some publicity regarding the outdoor refreshment area legislation. I want to let you know that Doug has done a yeoman's amount of work along with Ryan Dotson in our office. We are at the point where we are very close and expect at one of the two January meetings to be introducing to you that, what our suggestion is, and so that we can begin to get that rolling.
Thank you so much. City clerk? Roll call, please. Nothing, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Riverview Rotary again for the amazing work that you guys do for our city. Thank you so much for the contribution to our waterfront park. Also want to thank you guys. There's no better feeling to be a city council member than what we experienced Saturday night at the Christmas parade. Even if they're talking bad about you, you can't hear them, so it's always a great time. And we thank you guys for the hard work that you guys put into that every year. I can't imagine what it takes to organize such an event, but thank you so much for doing so. All the council members tonight had a little gift on their desk. It was a personal invitation from Union Church at the Danville Campus at 810 Main Street, and I want to invite everybody to Christmas at Union, December 23rd and 24th, at 6:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. So if you say six is too early, they got another option for you at 7:30 p.m. So hope to see all of you out. Again, that's December 23rd and 24th at 6:00 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. at Union Church, Danville Campus, 810 Main Street, which is the old YMCA. Thank you, Mayor.
And we want to make sure people know the gift that we have is very, it's candy, it's not a gift.
That's right.
Councilman Whittle.
You don't have to report it.
Councilman Whittle.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if Mr. Holland got his questions answered when he was here last week, please.
Sure, I've had a few conversations with Mr. Holland by email since he came and spoke. We are looking at making a few improvements along the way, what we want to avoid doing because we are conducting a corridor study from the, from the school field area to Main, to downtown, so we don't want to do any work now that would have to be undone based on the results of the study, which we are currently doing right now. So we're going to do a few things, but not, not everything. I think that it will be wise for us to be patient and wait for the results of the school field master plan and corridor study to be complete, and then to then make plans to implement whatever improvements need to be made along the Main Street corridor after that is done.
He was on board with you when you had that conversation with him?
The most recent email I received was, he understood, for my interpretation. Yep.
All right, all right. Madam, clerk?
Reverend Campbell?
Just one comment, it's just so good to see Reverend Dr. Cecil Bridgeforth and his wife here to put that line twice, and to see you now that you're still on the wall, concerned about the people and citizens of our community. I just want to say, God is good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to congratulate the new businesses that have opened over the last several months and the months to come, and a very special shout out to the citizens of Danville for displaying unity, resilience, and supporting this great city's growth. And it's a pleasure to see Reverend Bridgeforth back with us.
Thank you. Just want to piggyback off of what we just heard, and Reverend Bridgeforth, it's definitely good to see you. Mrs. Bridgeforth, same here. Dr. Harrison, doing a great job with the schools, and congratulations on your, everything that's going forward. And it's so good to knowing that in our Christmas parade, I enjoyed every bit of it, to see everybody out, to get me to wave at people, to knowing that our city is more and more coming together. That was a highlight that I'll never forget right there, and I know I'll be looking forward to many more. The Rotary and what, and everything that they have done and continuing to do, we thank, we thank them for all of what's, what's going on there. And to see Mayor Kushner and Hamlin, and I didn't realize it was Mayor Hamlin until it was called on, but it's so good to see each and every one of them, and to give the evidence on the logo, and knowing that we all can be a difference in planning and seeing how that goes. But above all, counsel, keep doing what we're doing. We're doing a good job. Thank you.
Yeah, glad to see Superintendent here tonight, and great job she's doing with our schools, and we continue to go forward. And we voted for our referendum, in large part due to the campaign they did to get it passed. You can't just put a tax issue on the voting agenda and expect it's going to get passed because the obvious, easy way is to vote no for any tax increase. So the public had to be educated, and I think they were educated, what the benefit this tax would be, which is strictly for schools, it's not on pharmaceuticals, drugs, it's not on food. So, great effort. And I'm glad to see Tommy Bennett went out to Las Vegas, represented the city, and came back and didn't lose his shirt gambling. And thank you for everybody else that showed up tonight. And one more comment, we, you know, a couple of meetings back, we were looking for people to fill vacancies on our different boards, and talked about vacancy, and right after the meeting, Tyrell Payne came up and said, I'd like to be on the board. And he just jumped right up and did that to serve. And that's what we need, is people are interested in serving on these very important boards that provide guidance to the city and then to the city council. So I'm going to do it again. We have vacancies on the Building Code Board of Appeals. You must be a citizen of Danville, in occupations or fields related to the board, which is engineer or architect. It only meets as needed. The building inspector makes a decision, and which can be appealed to this board. So it's good to have people with architecture knowledge, contractors, trades, housing, building housing. So if you have any interest like this or... housing, so if you have any interests like this or knowledgeable, we'd like, we have vacancies on that board. And the second one is the Employee Retirement System. You must be a city, a citizen of the city of Danville and familiar with investments and finances, it meets quarterly. Uh, this is a very important committee, they handle a lot of money for the retirement fund, it's how much, Clark, hundreds of thousands or...
Hundreds of millions.
Hundreds of millions of dollars of investments, so it's a very important board for the, for the employees of this city, their retirement fund. So, uh, we have vacancies on both these boards, and if you, uh, have interest, go online to www.danvillevirginia.govboards, or call the city clerk, she loves that. Sue Damasi, she'd love to hear from you, and our appointments committee would love to hear from you. Happy holidays, thank you.
Thank you.
Clark, thank you for bringing up the, um, the outdoor refreshment zone, you know, this, this is something that I've wished that was, was possible in Danville for a number of years, but of course, uh, Virginia law didn't, didn't allow it anywhere, uh, in the way that it, that it now will be, but, uh, there was legislation this past year that, uh, worked its way through and allows this kind of thing to happen, and, uh, it really exciting, you know, the feedback that has already gotten out there about people being able to sit out in our River District and, and enjoy a drink and, and just be around folks and, and have that communal experience, uh, it's very exciting, and again, I, I also want to give credit to, to Doug for all the work that he's been doing on this, I've probably called him 500 times in the last year about it, and emails and everything else, and, and he has been on top of it, and is making sure that we not only do it, but we do it in a way that, that is done well and done right, and so the, the thoroughness of, uh, of the work that's being done in his department, uh, to make sure that we launch this thing in a beautiful way is, uh, is, uh, credit to him and, and the staff that's making that happen. Um, briefly, I just wanted to say that, uh, I know I mentioned it here before, but, uh, this year I'm currently serving as the President of the Kiwanis Club of Danville, and, uh, and I love all the Rotarians that were here tonight, but I'm a Kiwanian, so I'm going to give a shout out to, to Kiwanis, and, uh, this past week, we had our Citizen of the Year banquet, which is, uh, the eighty-eighth annual one, uh, we didn't get to do it last year, it was the only year that it hadn't happened because of, uh, because of COVID, but, uh, we had our banquet last Thursday, and, uh, Dr. Albert Payne was awarded Citizen of the Year, and we actually have, uh, two folks here tonight that were on the, uh, selection committee for that, that, uh, that I put together, the, the committee, and so Stephen Gould and, and Tommy Bennett are here tonight that served on the committee, along with Trina McLaughlin and Neil Morris and, and Gail Barnes, and they did a fantastic job, uh, in, in choosing who, who the winner was this year, and it was a great banquet to be able to have everyone back, but Dr. Payne's done a lot of great work in this, uh, region for a number of years, and so he was a great choice, and, and I want to thank, uh, the, the committee for the, for the work that you all put in to make that happen as well. Uh, like everyone, I enjoyed the parade, uh, it was, it was wonderful, having it at nighttime again, uh, was, was fun, and, uh, the guys were riding around in the convertibles, and I'm usually in a convertible, and this year they put me in something that I didn't expect, but I was, I was very happy with, it was a 1940 Ford Woody, and this thing was beautiful, it was made out of wood, you should have seen it, Madison, you'd have loved it, and, uh, and so, uh, we had a great time, I, I, I was hanging off the side, on the, on the side runners there, and, and didn't fall off one time, and, uh, but we had a great time, and, uh, so I want to thank everyone that, that helped make the parade happen. And lastly, uh, I, I know those, uh, watching at home, those here in, in the audience, of course, we, we had a split vote on something tonight, which we don't have a ton of those down here, uh, and, and as far as a four-four vote, Clark said he's never seen one, so, um, but, but I just want to say that, uh, folks might think, oh, no, they're, they're, they're at odds over something, I promise you that when this meeting is over, all of these council members, there's not going to be any, any sparring, there's not going to be any hurt feelings or anything of that nature, uh, we will be just as friendly and getting along as we always do, and that's because this is a strong council, and this is a united council, and so even when we have differences of opinions on different things, we are never, have a difference of opinion and are resolved to see this city move forward and to see this city grow and thrive. Um, you know, the council members would, I get a text from the mayor out of the blue, just says, I'm, you know, I hope you're having a great day, or, or just some uplifting thing, Councilman Hood will, will text me, or, or Councilman Buckner, or different ones, we just, you know, we, we care about one another as individuals, and, and, um, we care about this city, obviously, and we want to see Danville, uh, reach heights it's never has before, and, um, so we're completely united and stronger than ever, and I look forward to a fantastic 2022 coming up. Thank you.
City staff, we talk about our city staff all the time, and city staff, along with the Riverview Rotary, I won't begin to call all of our city staff who helped the parade to be a success, but it was a great success when I saw the Parks and Recreation Director downtown, Bill was going up and down the streets, but I also want to take our time out to say to Mark Aaron, if you are viewing River City TV, Mark had to absolutely emcee every single float or every single person that was in the parade, and he did a magnificent job, because he had to know every single floating that was over a hundred-some floats. Also, you talked, we talked about earlier, you've heard a council talk about in regards to education, education being our number one priority, there's already some exciting things happening in education, and I'm sure if you saw the news, you saw where, all across the state of Virginia, schools are decreasing students, and Danville City is increasing, and that's due to the forward thinking of Dr. Harrison's school board for our virtual academy, and we have students in city of Danville, we're starting to increase, not only are we increasing, you heard tonight in regards to the bonds that we passed, and we, first reading will be passed real soon, so Danville Public Schools, we're on a great, great tier in regards to education being our number one priority, I'm real excited about it, and Dr. Harrison, you gave so many accolades to everyone else, let us give them to you, it took your leadership, I saw you everywhere, you and your husband was absolutely everywhere, and even though she didn't buy me any cotton candy at the fair, but she's been everywhere, so kudos to you and your team and the school board members for all that you all have done to have passed this. Lastly, to the Rotarians, thank you all so much for coming tonight, presenting a check, being partners, and all of the businesses that are partnered with you, and to Reverend Bridgeforth, we'll continue to keep you and your family in our prayers, and we pray that you have a wonderful Christmas, and please, please feel free to come back again. If there's nothing good, nothing else for the good of the meeting, this meeting is now adjourned. Five minutes.